Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the 100 and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the Board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star-Ledger, Express Times, and the 100 and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. All rise for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can I please have a roll call, Ms. Spitzer?
Mrs. Blutfeld, Dr. Charney, Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Can I have a motion, please, for approval of the March 14, 2022 minutes?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. And may I have a motion for approval of the March 21, 2022 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Abstain.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. We have our correspondence listed on the agenda, which is just one item, and we'll move on to Dr. Moore's report.
Thank you. Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to cede most of my time here to Mrs. Spitzer so that she can present the final budget as it was approved by the state. In our last budget conversation, of course, we were bemoaning a concern about being assessed for savings under Chapter 44. And, you know, thanks to Heather's strong work there, we were able to have that restored. And so the budget tonight is reflective of a strong effort, a strong appeal to get that sort of ironed out. And you'll recall, they were assessing us for savings on Chapter 44 that weren't actually savings. It was related more to our move to the school health insurance fund rather than because of Chapter 44. So we avoided getting hit twice by Chapter 44, basically. So thank you again, Heather, for that. Good work. And it puts us in a much stronger position moving forward. I've got a couple of things to point out quickly here and one or two notes. Coming back from a good break, I hope everyone feels refreshed. It was nice to come back to some nicer weather, and we're hoping that that carries on through for the rest of the school year for us, that we're out of, you know, the lion in like a lion, out like a lamb. That's a March-April thing, right? So hopefully, we're out of all of that at this point. And also, just want to share something that we've kind of shared as an update. You've heard from me, but I want to make sure that I talk about it here tonight. The 2020 census results have resulted in a reapportionment of board seats moving forward, so effective with the November election. So this coming November, we will have, as a result of changes in population across our region, one fewer Reddington seat and one additional Raritan seat. So we'll move to two Reddington seats, and then we'll have the four Raritan seats instead of three and three. So that's effective with the November election. And then, of course, moving on into the term as we get into the 2023 calendar year. So just wanted to make sure that we put that in my comments tonight. I do want to point out on the agenda, we have our staff all-stars for February and March. Kudos to Mr. Brandt and his team for not only the students of the month, but the staff all-stars that Mr. Estrada and others work on in his office. And that's always a nice morning, getting out to recognize all those folks. And Andrew Estrada, who coordinates this program, it was a bit tricky recognizing him and keeping that from him, right? So that was a little bit of a trick.
And Mr. Klein is on there this month.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is. Tim Klein, and always great to get around and give those awards. And for the teachers, we sort of embarrass them in their class in front of their kits, so it's a nice moment. Also, Hibbs' suspension report is on here with the incidents that were discussed in closed session last time. Those are on here for action tonight. So you have one motion out of my report tonight. And from there, I guess, Ms. Spitzer, you're next on the agenda, right, with the budget hearing? Are you next on the agenda? So I will just turn it over to you then, unless there are any questions for me.
Do you want to move the motion first?
Yeah, let's move the Hibbs motion first, actually.
Do you want to abstain on that, because I wasn't here for those?
You can. Yeah, that's okay. Wait a minute.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, as long as we...
They're six of them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. Can I have a motion to affirm Hibbs 40, 42, 44, 45, 46, and 47?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Okay, Ms. Spitzer.
All right. Ms. Spitzer, it's all yours. Now, you can all see the screen. She also has uploaded the presentation in PowerPoint format to the agenda, so if that works where you can see it on your own screen as well. But it's all yours, Ms. Spitzer.
Tonight is the official public hearing for the adoption of the budget for the 2223 school year. There were changes to the original budget that we approved in March due to the assessment that Dr. Moore discussed for Chapter 44. Part of the process of... So we'll talk more in detail about what that looks like and how that impacted our budget and tax levy. So I'm just going to go over a few of the things that we discussed when we approved the original budget in March, and then get into more detail in terms of... Oh, so sorry. More detail in terms of what changed in the budget and what programs specifically that impacted. So we're almost done. Thankfully, this has been a long budget season for some reason with the changes at the state of New Jersey, as well as some of the things that they decided to do and throw at us in terms of some of the requirements. But the budget process where we are so far is... The process begins last October and November, sending out and beginning to evaluate trends in our expenditures by department. We start to identify things that we need based on trend and things that we need based on programs going forward. Budget documents are sent to each of the supervisors for each department, and they come up with what their needs are specifically for their programs based on purchases, and they're also aligned with district initiatives, new programs, programs that maybe we aren't going to be running anymore, or other initiatives directed by the state, as well as the curriculum standards. Once they've determined what those types of things are and things that they think specifically by department, those things are discussed with our curriculum director, and she goes through and determines if those things are all going to fit together. Once it comes from them, it comes back to me, and then we start talking as an administrative team in terms of things that are needed in the district, and we start to look at those things that are maybe extras that weren't budgeted in prior years, or new programs that we need to go forward, and we start to make decisions on what those are and how they're going to look going forward. That's all been done. After all of those things are done, then it starts to come to the committee. So you start to see it in your board committees. You start talking about things that specifically relate to you. If it's curriculum, it's before the curriculum committee. If it's personnel-related, it's before the personnel committee. If it's O&amp;T, operations and transportation, you're going to get that there. O&amp;T gets the whole bucket because they look at the whole budget in total after all of those other pieces come back from each of the other committees. Once that's done, during this whole process, I'm building and putting all the numbers together, and then we wait. We hurry up and wait for the budget to be... The state budget to be done by our governor. And this year, he decided to postpone that for two weeks, which tightened our timelines a little bit. So we didn't get our budget numbers until the first week of March, where typically it's the last Tuesday of February. So that kind of limited some of the things that we can do. Not only did we have that issue, but we received a $257,000 reduction in our state aid. You'll see later in the presentation, over the last four years, we've taken a reduction in our state aid of $1.16 million. So we're doing a lot with a little, and we've been able... I think we talked at the last meeting in terms of we do have declining enrollment from student perspective, and the way we've been able to kind of manage with those reductions in state aid is we've been able to, through attrition or some of the other things, been able to continue most of our programming as-is, and even enhance several programs based on just tightening up and doing what we need to do, even with those substantial state aid reductions. And we do anticipate a few more. One of the surprises that we did receive this year, and we talked in great length about this at the last meeting, was due to a law that was passed retroactively last fall, and it was called Chapter 44. And what that did is that mandated, and I apologize, it was last spring. It mandated that new employees in a district, and even if you're changing, you're either a new employee, or if you're changing districts, you're required to go into what they called the Employee Health Benefit Plan. That was supposed to have been... It was negotiated between the NJEA and our government in New Jersey. And basically, the goal, overall goal, was to reduce the cost of health care, not only for public entities, but also for individuals contributing to those, because we do contribute a percentage of our health care costs based on plan type. And what they did is they restructured it completely. The goal was not to offer such a robust plan, but then, on the other side, also not have such a large amount contributed. So under Chapter 78, which came into effect, I believe, in 2014, employees, based on their level of coverage and based on their salaries, contributed a percentage of the cost of the premium. On average, in our district, it was about 18% to 20% of the cost of the premium. So our family premium is about $45,000 a year. So employees at the $60,000 range were contributing 18% of that. That same plan, under EHP, the goal was for that plan to be a lot less money, because it was supposed to be more restrictive. So they changed the programming, and instead of it being a cost of the percentage of the premium, it was a cost of a percentage of your salary. So if you think of put that into perspective, your salary isn't going up as quickly as the cost of the premium. So in and of itself, that's a risk for public entities contributing to the health care. The challenge to the carrier was the plan shouldn't be as expensive, because we're not offering as much. That didn't come to fruition. So instead of contributing 18% of $45,000, that average employee is contributing 4% of their salary of $60,000. So the district is taking a hit on the difference. So you have the cost of the premium, and they're contributing, you know, $12,000 versus the cost of the premium, which is about $1,000 less, and they're only contributing about $6,000. So the $5,000 is being made up with public funds. The state of New Jersey, part of that law, is that any savings that the district recognizes due to the transition of Chapter 44 going to EHP is an automatic reduction in your state aid from the prior year. The challenge was prove it. So the reason we showed... And we took... They automatically reduced our prior-year state aid, which is the budget we're living in right now, by $406,000. So in the 2223 year, that also eliminated a 2% increase year-over-year that we get for the natural part of the budget. So just by moving to the next year, the cap is a 2% increase year-over-year. So overall, we lost $416,000. So not only did we lose the 257, that was gone no matter what, we lost another $416,000. So what we were forced to do is appeal it, and we weren't the only district. I think we got news today that there were more than 100 districts in the state of New Jersey that were in this position. And it was because of the flaw in the way that they determined the savings, and I use that word very loosely. The reason our district showed a savings is because we transitioned from a private plan to what we call the state insurance fund. So we're now in a health benefit fund with many other districts, and we have a good experience rating. So our savings was shown by transitioning to the plan. Sadly, we transitioned to the plan on 1/1/21, which is when we implemented EHP. So just by looking at the raw numbers, it looks like we had the substantial savings, but it had nothing to do with EHP. We're losing money, and what we had to do is prove that we were losing money by everybody transitioning. We were able to do that, and we were able to restore the $416,000 into our budget. So any programs that were at risk from when we originally budgeted, because I had to prepare the budget based on the fact that we didn't have those fundings, and there were programs that were at risk, everything has been reinstated. And the budget we were preparing for the needs of the district in March is the budget that we're proposing tonight for final adoption. So once all of that happens, we hopefully approve the adopted budget this evening. It then does have to be revised and go back to the county office for final approval. I have 48 hours to put the user-friendly budget on the website, and the budget presentation is already posted. That will go to the website as well. So those are two things that go next. After we post that information and we get our final approvals from the county office, there is some additional paperwork that has to be done. Then what happens is because we're regional, all of our tax rates get shared with all of our regional counterparts so that they can certify the taxes in each of their towns for the budgets going forward. So that comes once we finalize tonight. It goes to the county office again for final approval. Really, it's just for updates in terms of what we changed and why we changed them, and what it meant to the overall budget. Oh, I keep forgetting this. So sorry. There we go. And then, once we certify our taxes, we're good for another year, hopefully, although the state budget hasn't been approved yet. So we've been known to have some changes in July, so let's hope that doesn't happen this year. The things that... And these, I went into great detail when we talked in March, and I'll hit these things. These are all things that we consider as objectives in preparing the budget from the beginning until we do the final copy. So from an educational perspective, our goals are to be able to implement innovative programs and fulfill the New Jersey standards. We also would like to ensure that each student has access to a full range of programming towards their individual goals and desires. We plan to always sustain and nurture our staff and to grow them to the capacity of the structures, to the best of our programs. And we would like to be able to enhance the district's facilities for safety and security measures, and we've been really successful in doing that as well through our planning from a capital reserve perspective. And we'll talk about that as well as we get further on into this presentation and how we've been able to manage paying off our debt service and funding those advances from a facilities perspective with capital reserve planning. And then, from a fiscal perspective, our goal is always to be fiscally responsible. We would always like to advance and respect the 2223 budget by implementing strategies to balance the needs of the district and still maintain our tax levy within our 2% cap, and we have been successful in doing that. The statement of priorities is actually budgetary information that the state of New Jersey requires when we submit our budget, and it's driven by many key areas. The first is to maintain our school system. So we want to, again, enhance our campus security, ensuring that we're focusing on students' wellness and staffing and programming. We always want to continue our efforts towards the distinction of anti-bias equity, Achieve New Jersey, NJSLS, and other priorities and mandates. We want to maintain our student support services for a diverse population, maintain a comprehensive programs for curricular offerings. Another one of our priorities is to raise standards and expanding opportunities. We want to be able to do that for all students, including students at risk of underperformance. We want to be able to expand and innovate to align with the district's priorities, maintain supports and grow the ELL population, and we have been successful in doing that with several programs over the last several years. Expand CTE, magnet, and other individualized college and career exploration opportunities. Maintain a comprehensive program of studies, integrating wellness and supporting individualized goals for post-secondary fulfillment and success. Align assessment and other measurements to equity goals to close the achievement and opportunity gaps and to address impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, which sadly, we are still dealing with on a daily basis. The next priority is to build professionalism, and we do that by expanding classroom and a school culture that's more attuned to students' social and emotional needs. Utilize data from teacher observation and evaluations to frame professional learning. Increase capacity for technology integration. Provide expanded opportunities for teacher leadership. Increase staff-wide literacy on racism, bias, and prejudice in support of anti-racism and anti-bias work. And then, to be able to support the staff through continued impacts of the COVID-19 While we are working towards each of those priorities, we're constantly making sure that we're protecting our investment, which is our facilities and our plans within the campus. We support staff and conduct facility improvements to increase security. And I don't know if you've been in the 910 Building, but over Easter break, we were able to do some additional work there that's been delayed a little bit with some supply chain slowdowns. We continue to implement controls to support and minimize the tax levy increase. And then, the last thing that we're considering always is we have to always plan for our future. When we do a budget, we don't look for the next 10 months or 12 months. You're always looking three to four, five years down the road, because if you were to look so short-sighted, so many things change. So you always have to constantly be looking forward to not only revenue streams, but expense streams, declining enrollment or increasing enrollments, new building housing areas that are going in. All of those types of things are always considered, and we're always looking forward. So we're always continuing to analyze programs and staffing, again, against projections, enrollment projections. We monitor all mandated assessment results, and we all know, we see those quite often coming from the state, and other data related to student access and success for curriculum alignment. And we identify and explore opportunities for enhancing individualized and personalized learning. Oh, I'm so sorry. I think I should change these. So in doing a school budget, we do something called fund accounting. Most of you are probably used to business accounting, so you have a net profit or a loss. Your revenues exceed your expenditures, you have a profit. If your revenues are less than your expenditures, you have a loss. In fund accounting, they equal. So your revenues have to equal your expenditure. So it's called a general fund. In schools also, it's very difficult for us to generate revenue. We're very creative in some of the things we do. You know, we do have tuition students that come into district that we charge for. We do the best we can with investments, so we make sure that we maximize as best we can on our investment income. But really, the sole source, other than the state aid, which we already talked about, is decreasing on a regular basis, the only other option we have is the general fund tax levy. And basically, year-over-year, that can go up by law 2%. When we did the original budget in March, it was 1.27%. We had cut out the $416,000. It has been restored to a complete 2% year-over-year increase. So our proposed tax levy for next year is $57,917,438. And we were able to do this on the successful appeal of the Chapter 44 assessment, and the programming that we talked about at the last meeting in terms of having to expand some programs for students that were at risk, that we were working towards, have been restored. So those are things that are back in the planning stages, and we're looking forward to being able to control those programs going forward. So again, our tax levy increase proposed is 2% year-over-year. We did not have any banked cap, and there were no other adjustments. The state of New Jersey does allow you to go over the 2% if you have something that we called bank cap. Bank capped comes from prior years. If you didn't budget to the full 2%, it rolls into a banked cap, and you have three years to use it. We traditionally budget to the 2% based on the growth of our district and the declining state aid. It kind of ties our hands, so the 2% is where we usually end up. Other adjustments would be things like, they do give you an adjustment for health benefit costs, but it's based on whatever the state Employee Health Benefit Plan increase is year-over-year, and it has to be more than 5%. And state health has not been... Our rates have been increasing at a lower rate than the Employee State Health Benefit Plan, so we don't get an adjustment for that. So we have a flat 2% increase year-over-year. One of the good stories to tell this year is we've basically paid off our mortgage. So in September of 2021, we made our final payment on our last referendum, which was in 2004. So our '21, '22 school year, this existing school year, we had a budget of $2,152,000 as an expenditure in our budget to pay the bond referendum. That is zero for next year. So theoretically, that is a direct tax levy decrease, and it's instant tax rate decrease. So that automatically, and you'll see it when we get towards the end of the presentation, that actually will reduce the amount of money we need to raise in taxes, and therefore, the local contribution for tax rate. The way we're able to do that is this district has been really good from a board perspective, from an administrative perspective, and a planning perspective, year after year after year, to begin to plan for projects on a regular basis. So we have a very fluid, long-range facility plan. Projects are planned out way in advance in terms of what the needs and the projection is in the district. And we put the money aside each year, little by little, like you would do at home. If you need a new roof and you can't afford $20,000 for a roof, maybe you put $5,000 away a year, or whatever you can do. So we kind of build that as part of our process, and that's allowed us to not have to go out to referendum, and this $2.1 million does go directly to the bottom line. And we're set up for a long period of time by doing that. That's been the direction of the district long before I was here. It's been BA after BA and administration after administration, and that was the directive and the goals that they had set, and it seems to have just worked out to be a really positive thing for the district. So as you can see, this piece of pie, it's really kind of sad, because you can see that we really don't have many revenue streams to be able to support our programs and to be able to support what we do every day in this district. You can see that the biggest piece of the pie is the green one, and that's our tax levy. That's what we just talked about. The tax levy is 81% of our overall budget. Included also, some of the other additional funding that we receive, and the purple is local share. So those are things like interest income and those types of things. It's a very small amount, because we can't... Interest rates, hopefully, we'll be able to do a little bit better. It's a double whammy, I think, but from an investment perspective. But rates have been so low for so long, we did reduce quite a bit this year. State aid is 6.6%, so if you look at that in the whole big picture, 81% is tax levy, which is your real estate taxes, and 6.6% is given back to us by our income taxes that we pay to the state of New Jersey. So it's really immaterial in the whole big picture. We also have something called the fund balance. So remember when I said our revenues and expenditures have to equal? If our revenues exceed our expenditures, and traditionally, they have here in several years, we also use the excess fund balance, which is what it's called, as a revenue stream... years, we also use the excess fund balance, which is what it's called, as a revenue stream in a budget two years later. So that number is determined in the annual audit, and it's given back in not the existing budget, but the following budget. So that's about 5%, 5.6%, and it's consistent year-over-year. So we maintain that. And that's one of those things that you have to be careful with, because if you're not planning long-term, and you all of a sudden don't have that money, you've got a big hole that you have to fill somewhere. So either you find that amount of money, 5.6% more in revenue, or you cut your expenditures by that amount of money. And it's about $3.8 to $4 million. So it's really difficult to do that. And then the final thing that we have is capital reserve. And those are budget monies that we specifically budget to take out of capital reserve, which is a fund specifically only for capital projects. Those capital projects are part of our long-range facility plan. They're approved by the board, they're approved by committees, and the final approval comes from the state of New Jersey when it's time to spend the money. When we go through the process for planning those projects, it needs to be approved by the state of New Jersey before we can even go out to bid. So this year, that's $4.2 million. So the next slide is specifically the year-over-year numbers. So as you can see, the '21, '22 budget is $75 million, and the '22, '23 budget is $71.9 million. It's down $3.8 million. That's a little bit misleading on its face, because there is something else that rolls into revenue, and it's called prior year encumbrances. And what an encumbrance is, it's a number that we are allowed to carry forward from the prior year budget, because the service has either been provided, or the goods have been received, and we don't have a receivable. So it's not a payable, it's an encumbrance. They allow us to move that money forward. So basically, what that looks like then, and you'll see it on the expenditure side, remember, I told you your revenues equal your expenditures? Well, when you look at '21, '22, revenues don't equal your expenditures. They're off the prior year encumbrances, because there's nowhere to capture that. So that's prior year money that we're allowed to use on those specific items in the current year budget. So without some of those things, the other big decrease that you'll see year-over-year are our grants, which is what you'll see in special revenue fund is our grants. It's what I call Fund 20. And basically, we've received $1.8 million in grants. That's our ESER money that we've received, a lot of the CARES Act money that we've received that we're planning for the future, that we don't anticipate receiving for future years. So the trick with the grant funds, and it's really actually an easy budget thing, you can't spend more than you receive, because you don't get to raise Fund 20 money. It's given to you by grants. You can write grants, but you can't spend more than you get. So we're required by law to budget 85% of the prior year, but only on certain titles. So our ESER money, so our Title I, II, III, and IV, we budget 85%, and our IDA, we budget 85%. So that's why you see a $1.2 million decrease. That's part of the 3.8, which is a little misleading. Our general fund, which is our Fund 10, operating budget is up year-over-year $915,000. And then we're reducing the amount we're withdrawing. This year, we budgeted 5.187 for capital projects. Next year, we're only budgeting 4.2, so that's another 962 that you see being reduced. So on its face, it looks like we're reducing 3.8, but those are special projects. That won't ever happen again. So the expenditures that are included, my computer's yelling at me. It wants to restart. Can I wait an hour? Okay, let's see if that worked. It's barking at me. Okay, so expenditures that are included in our general fund, and this is our operating budget, so these are the things that we use every day. That's our instructional programs, our special education programs, instructional support services, which includes our library counseling services, our health office, our curriculum supervisors and staff training, our administrative expenses, which is the superintendent's office, the principal's human resources, the business office, and the information technology. That's what we call our administrative expenditures. We have an operations department, which is our maintenance, custodial, grounds, and security department, transportation. We have a very robust transportation program here, and this is one way that we are able to successfully fund a lot of our own programming. What we do is we move 6,000 kids a day. So not only do we move the 100 and Central students, we also move the East Amwell students, we move the Delaware Township students, and we move the Flemington-Raritan students. So by doing that, we're able to defer some of the costs. We're able to run our buses. I've got buses doing two and four runs a day. So, you know, they pick up an elementary run, and they bring those kids where they need to go, and then they come and get the high school students, and they drop them off. Actually, I think it's the other way around. Then they'll go get preschool students, and they'll bring them where they need to go, and then they'll drop off a half-day preschool student and pick up. So they're constantly moving. So that's the way we're able to get efficiency, and we're able to save money. That's what the state of New Jersey likes for us to do, and we have a really good program with that. It's called, in our district, we call it JTC, which is a joint transportation commission, and we share 50% of this program with Flemington-Raritan. So we have 85 buses. So Flemington-Raritan owns, what, 42 and 1/2 of them? So we share all of those expenses 50/50 down the line, from staffing to equipment to overhead, and some of our expenditures as well is allocated out, and it's reconciled at the end of each year. We do all of those things here. So we do the budget, we pay all the employees, we insure all the buses, we do all of the risk management on the buses, we maintain the buses. So a big piece is done here, so we do push some of those costs down, but that's one of the ways we're able to be successful in saving some of the money that we've had to save in other areas that have been cut. The next big ticket number in our budget is employee benefits and taxes. So that's our FICA taxes, that's our PERS, our pensions, that's our health benefits. All of those types of things roll up into what we call employee benefits. We have equipment purchases. Any asset, any piece of equipment in the district that's purchased in excess of $2,000 is booked as a fixed asset. That's the law. So we do budget them, and it's something called Fund 12. So I kind of fall back sometime on just wrote things. So if I say Fund 12, it's a capital asset. And then, of course, we have capital projects, which we just talked about in terms of it's money that we've put away for planning for long-term, and as those projects come up, we budget to take them out of capital reserve during the year and then complete the projects. If the project doesn't go to fruition, so for example, we had a project budgeted for this year, that when we started to go through the drawings, and it just wasn't conducive to what we needed to do. So the project isn't going to happen, so we don't spend the money. The money stays in capital reserve for a future project, or a redesign of the project that we were hoping to do, or some other way to do it. So just because we budget it doesn't mean it's necessarily going to come to fruition. We can go out to bid, and especially in today's day and age, the bid could come in way over what we initially thought the budget was going to be. So that's a decision-making process. Do we go ahead with excess funds that we already have in capital reserves? Or, you know, do we call it a day and hope that the funding will be, or we could go out to bid, or we can hope that the funding will be less in future years if we need to do that? So that's another force of, that's also included in our expenditures. So all of those things have their own category. And as you can see, regular education, those are instructional costs as well as benefits. Those are those two big pieces of the pie. So 26% is spent on regular education, and 22% is based on our benefits. So this gives you more of a detail of specifically where they're going. So regular instruction and program, those are our gen ed teachers, textbook supplies for our gen ed classrooms. And you'll see that that's going up year-over-year $193,000. Our special ed programs, again, that's included in that number is staffing and supplies for those specific programs. Instructional support services, we talked about that being the library child study team guidance, nurse curriculum staffing. So you'll see that each of these categories are, most of them are going down year-over-year. And a lot of that has to do with included in the actual budget expenditures, as I talked about, included those prior year encumbrances that aren't there this year. But overall, our biggest numbers are instructional, our regular programs, instructional support services, and our employee benefits. $15 million of our budget next year is just employee benefits. And this is just a quick graphic of, you know, we always talk about, you know, what business we're in, and, you know, we look at these numbers, and I think my predecessor used to say, we're in the people business. 78.2% of our budget is spent on employee salaries and employee benefits. So those are some big numbers, but that's, those are our assets. Those are where we focus and get the best results. So this is kind of a visual that's pretty obvious. These are the '22, '23 capital reserve projects that we have planned for next year. We have budgeted $4.225 million. Again, this is money that's budgeted to come directly out of the capital reserve fund. This, again, is just an initial budget. If we don't do the project, we don't move the money. The money doesn't get moved until the project is approved. And you'll see even on tonight's agenda, there's money to move from capital reserve for the existing, some of the existing projects we're working on. So included in the $4 million is paving the IMC lot. We do rotate the parking lots. I think this is the third in a series over the last five years. It's estimated at $2.25 million, or 2.250. Outside seating covering for the cafeteria outside the 910 building. I think with the, we struggle at times with seating for our one block, so this was one of the solutions. We do have a project going in this summer that includes a structural building, and this will be part of adding on to that. So the students have a place to go to eat outside once that project is completed. We're continuing to do classroom updates and facility room upgrades to bring them into more collaborative spacing. So this is a standard that we have in our budget year-over-year, and we anticipate to continue with those projects. We do have a classroom that, it's for one of our special education programs that needs to be renovated, that we've been working on for a couple of years. So this is another initiative that's part of next year's planning. We are working with the security upgrades that we've had to do from a cybersecurity perspective. It's caused us to have to do a lot of redundancy and backups in different areas of our campus so that we're more secure and cyber-secure. So we have about a $75,000 project that will include putting in some more fiber work to be able to allow us to do that going forward. We have a small amount of money to go, small amount of money, we have $200,000 in the JV baseball field upgrades needed to just bring the field up to. We had a little bit of damage and overall wear and tear that's caused us to need to invest a little bit of money to get us to the next level. And we continue to look at additional seating for students with the one-block lunch, and we've been successful in removing lockers that the students no longer use, and actually put in bench seating so that the students have a place to sit and eat their lunches. So that's, again, another piece going in for next year. Those are the biggest pieces of the budget. Well, those are the total, that's the total budget, and these were the highlights. And at the end of the day, I think this is probably the most important slide for most people, because this is what impacts you, and it impacts your taxes. So what this slide is saying, the calculation is done based on equalization value of your homes in your area, the number of students from your specific region or town or township that sends to the high school. And that percentage is allocated based on the total tax levy, the $57 million that we talked originally. So this is a top-level view. So for the homeowners in Delaware Township, we have, we're projecting 137 students to be in our district next year at the high school level, which is 7.7% of the levy. That will cause your taxes to go down per $100,000 of assessed value, $54.30. So if your house is assessed at $100,000, I'm doing simple math, your taxes will go down $54.30. The thing to remember here is, this is just one piece of your bill, especially as a regional district. So I know I live in a regional district, and I get really excited when my elementary school or my high school says, I'm going to save you money. But at the same time, the high school or the elementary school goes up, so you don't see that $54.30 on your bill. So I can only present to you what our tax levy and how our tax levy is going to impact your taxes. East Amwell is projecting to go down $40.12 on $100,000 of assessed value. Flemington is projected to go down $15.52. Raritan is going down $11.73, and Reddington is going up $11.48. The reason is because of the number of students, the equalization value, and ratables are considered in this number. So those things didn't change as rapidly for Reddington as they did for others. The biggest reason that we talked about in terms of seeing these rates go down year-over-year is due to that $2.152 million for the debt service payoff. So that isn't coming back without having to go out for referendum again. I do not foresee in any near future that this district will need to do that, short of a major catastrophe. We are well-positioned to move forward with money that we have in capital reserves to be able to keep the district in line with their goals and maintaining their facilities for safety and security measures without having to go out to referendum. I think that's all. So tonight, hopefully, we'll be able to adopt the final budget as it's been revised and presented. And then we'll get it to the county office to get it finalized into your tax assessors. Wow.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
So with our residence forum, we'll use our residence forum for any public, or is this a separate public comment section?
Since it's on the agenda, you can use it as residence forum, unless anyone has any questions now, that's completely up to what you'd prefer.
All right, so we can roll into the residence. All right, Heather, thank you so much. And so that's the end of our reports from the administration tonight, and we can head on now into the rest of the agenda, starting with the residence forum and any public comment on the budget.
So we're going to move into the first residence forum. This is for items, action items on the agenda, or anything having to do with the budget that Mrs. Spitzer just presented. Each speaker has five minutes for a total of 30. Okay, seeing nobody is looking to speak at the first residence forum, we'll move into our committee reports, student life and program. Mr. Richard, you have an update for us?
Not much since our last meeting. Most of these, all of these items were presented at our last meeting, so tonight, we are simply voting on them. I would like to move item one, which is policies, first reading. We discussed these policies last time. Item two is the new club noteworthy, move for approval tonight. Number three is an overnight field trip for the indoor color guard to Wildwood, move for approval tonight. Number four is tuition and transportation for two special ed students, as shown on the agenda. And that's it from the student life committee. And with that, I'd like to move items one through four for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Operations and transportation. Mr. Fowler, give us an update?
Yes, actually, a large number of action items tonight, 14 of them by my count. I'll try to be as brief as possible. But we do have financial reports that we'd like to move to approve. We have a number of invoices totaling $6,405, sorry, is that a $6 billion? $405,980?
Oh, my gosh.
No, you were right. Goodness. Sorry, I was right. $6,405,000, I was like, that's a big number. We didn't cover that in the budget. The number is reflected in the agenda. Move to approve number of line account transfers, as was just presented. Move to adopt the budget. I'm not done yet, hold on, a couple more. Move toward storage building project bid to the sapio construction, again, as noted in our agenda. Move to approve a contract with Biofit Danica for lab stools. Move to approve a contract with Danica for classroom furniture for 910 science lab. Move to approve a contract with Danica for furniture for the 910 faculty room alteration project. Move to approve an agreement with Somerset Educational Services to provide the services as outlined in our agenda. Only a few more. Move to approve perpetual transportation agreements for 2021, 2022 school year, again, as noted in our agenda. Same move to approve parental transportation agreements for 2022. Same move to approve parental transportation agreements for 2022, '23. And move to approve the joint transportation routes as documented for, let's see, Delaware Township.
1.82.
The same for East Amwell.
It was fudged.
And finally, to move to authorize the business administrator to bid transportation routes for 2022, '23 school year. So as noted on the agenda, one through 14.
Thank you. I have a second, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one quick thought, I was just confirming with Mrs. Spitzer. And it's a good example of how the joint transportation arrangement that we have with Flemington Raritan helps us continue to be responsible in the funding of that operation. So even though we're limited to a 2% increase in our budget each year, and of course expenses go beyond 2% in terms of increase each year, I just wanted to point out the increase for Delaware and East Amwell, who are sort of like customers to our joint transportation outfit that we have with Flemington Raritan, the increase that we've been able to manage for them is under 2%. So from last year to this year, we haven't had to increase their expenses. And that's helpful for them because they're dealing with the same 2% cap that everybody else is. So when we're able to go to them and say, "Well, our increase is going to be less than 2%," that helps them maintain their other programs as well. And I think that's a testament to the efficiency that we get from our arrangement with Flemington Raritan and the JTC. So it's a little bit of an example there of how that can help us all out.
I have a question. What is a parent transportation agreement?
So by law, we have to transport all students to and from school. We do have three parental transportation agreements. Two of them are special ed cases where the parent actually transports the student in lieu of us transporting them. The state allows us a maximum dollar amount of $20,200 a year. They provide documentation of the transport mileage. They have to provide registration and driver's license and they need to carry a million-dollar rider. And in these particular situations, the cost to transport these students is excess of $100,000 each. So that's the reason we do, we're able to do what we do with these.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just one more comment. Want to thank Ms. Spitzer for all of her due diligence on this budget, the detailed work that she puts in as well as being mindful of her strategy. I think we're all appreciative that you're doing this and not a person like me because it would be much uglier. So thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Personnel committee, Mr. Davidson.
Yes, we have a lot of items because we are reauthorizing all of our employees tonight with all their contracts and per diem and on. So I'm just going to knock down the categories very quickly. We're not going to go down 500 names. Okay, in the beginning, the first five items are the usual suspects that we have every time for the personnel committee. We have retirements, resignations, very minor few people, okay? Appointment, per diem appointments, proctors, monasteries and desk coordinators. We have advisors, Schedule C advisors. We have some revisions to leave. We have coaches, a coach who is, we're going to have for volleyball. And professional development. And those eight items are the usual ones that we have. From them on, we're talking about the teachers. HCA teachers. And all of these are for effective dates of 9/1 to 6/30. 23, the period for the next school year. All right, so we have. I did tally them so anybody knows. We have 203. HCA certified teachers that we're approving tonight for their new contracts. Let me flip through here. We have, I'll read from my summary list. HCA acquiring tenure, those previous ones were 203 tenures. We have 10 people acquiring tenure, 47 non-tenured HCEA teachers, HCEA paraprofessionals, there are 60 of those. We have HCEA custodians, 29. HCEA maintenance, six. And HCEA mechanics, three. We have five HCEA technical staff. And of course, HCEA secretaries, tenured, 15. HCAA administrators, tenured, three. Six administrators acquiring tenure, three who are non-tenured. We have then unaffiliated tenured certified administrators, one. Non-tenured of the same, non-certified tenures, admin, three. Non-certified, unaffiliated, tenures, one. And non-certified, unaffiliated, not eligible for tenure, six. Unaffiliated support staff, tenured, seven. Unaffiliated support staff, non-tenured, eight. Unaffiliated support staff, non-eligible for tenure, 24. JTC bus drivers, 49. And HCEA operating stipends, custodians and maintenance, 24. Which takes us to the total of, I didn't add more, I didn't add them all up. A lot of people, anyway. Some were.
A lot of people.
A lot of people. So. I'm moving that we approve these groups of people for their, as stated, in items one through 29, right. One through 29 for approval.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just a couple of quick points. So everything that begins with the label HCEA, so going up through number 17, those folks are being appointed on the same step and at the same salary as they have this year because this is a negotiations year for their contract. So that's not yet determined for next year. So they will all be relisted when we come to a contract settlement. Just right now, this is serving as a promise of employment to all of these folks. So they're being appointed here on their current step in salary, just as a promise of employment into next year. And then once the contract is settled, they'll be reappointed at their new salaries. HCAA, so you're 18 through, 18 and 19, those folks have a settled contract, I'm sorry, 18 through 20. And then 21, so those are the actual salaries for next year. And then the rest are all of our unaffiliated folks, those are the actual salary recommendations for next year as well. Those won't change. And we had some discussion about all of that in closed session last time as well. So it's a lot on here, just know that as we get further on into the school year or later, when we settle with the HCEA, the next successor contract, all those folks are going to have to be relisted at a new step and a new salary, so.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And Mrs. O'Donnell, we forgot to put racism equity diversity committee on the agenda. Do you have anything to report?
That's okay, I can just give a quick update. We're really nearing the final stage here of the development stage. The students and staff that have been on this extended committee are working really hard and really nearing completion, which is exciting. So I really just want to thank Dr. Moore for all of the work that you've been doing on this. And also Lindsay Warren, Scott Sax, Scott Cohen, and our amazing students, Amy Torres Valverde, Alana Lenat, Jasmine Likir, Joy Papazian, Rigo Salvatira. I think that's everybody for right now, but.
I think Amir.
Yeah, Amir.
Amir Almantrai.
Amir, thank you. Amir Alman, thank you. Yeah, so this has just been a really productive group and we'll hopefully be finishing this up to share out soon. Thank you.
Yeah, so we anticipate having a draft of that policy for you in May for discussion and also some events for feedback to different groups out in the community as well. So really pleased and I want to just echo Mrs. O'Donnell's thanks. And also thanks to you and to Mrs. Hughes and Mr. Richard for their work on this committee as well. It's been a couple of marathon sessions. It's hard to write a policy with a large group of people, but we've done, I think there's some really important work there. So I look forward to bringing that all to you with Mrs. O'Donnell next month.
Great, thank you. Do we have any additional board business at this time? Or board comments? Okay, we're going to move to our second residence forum. This is for general comments. As with our first residence forum, you have five minutes, come up to the mic. State your name and address, please, and write it down if there's a sheet of paper, I hope, up there.
So my name is Lisa Santangelo from Reddington Township. The last few times that I've spoken, I've addressed the transgender student policy 5756. I've stated in the past, and I'll restate tonight, that these concerns that I'm raising are about parental rights, not about transgender. I'm really just trying to understand why parental rights are not being considered, which is why I've raised some serious red flags. I know that at the end of the last board meeting, Dr. Moore stated that the reason for not seeking parental consent is because the kids are experiencing either depression or they could potentially be harmed by their parents. So I'm just wondering, how many kids are we talking about? How do you determine that? Are all the transgender kids being harmed? If a student is caught vaping in a physical or its location, doing drugs, would the school contact the parent then? Or would the school only contact the parent if the student wasn't transgender? I don't understand the logic behind excluding parents for one infraction and/or concern, but not the other. What specific law, regulation or authority gives you the right to exclude parents from minors aged 14 through 17? I did discuss the Keystone Law last time. I don't think 16-plus qualifies for consenting to treatment because I don't think the transgender gender dysphoria falls under a temporary condition and the policy doesn't carve out for 14 and 15-year-olds. But then it was stated that you have the authority anyway because parents would or are harming their kids. Again, what law specifically allows you to ignore the provisions of the Keystone Law? One of the other issues to address is informed consent. There is a lot of misinformation out there, so giving each of these kids accurate information on the pros and cons is key. So for example, when the policy states sex assigned at birth, this is obviously factually incorrect. Science has determined that upon conception, the XX or XY chromosome is already determined. This statement should be corrected within the policy. It is factually inaccurate and extremely misleading. I also find it astounding that no one has followed up with me on these issues. Again, if you don't inform the parent who are not in compliance with the Anti-Bullying Rights Act and the Law Against Discrimination, which states the school requires and must comply with working with parents on prevention, how can this possible? I really, it's amazing. How can this be possible if you are not informing the parent that, one, the child wants to change their gender identity, which could alter the rest of their lives, and, two, raises their risk status for bullying because they are now in a protected class with regard to gender expression? The other violation that had stated was with regard to FERPA. Parents have a right to see their children's records and/or request to change if the information is inaccurate or misleading. How can they do this when they don't know about the newly created student records regarding their transgender status? These laws, regulations and acts are complicated. There is no way that minors have the mental capacity to understand all of their rights to make a determination for themselves, but yet the policy states that it wants to have a closed-door confidential conversation to discuss protected topics per the Pupil Privacy Rights Act and social behaviors and attitudes. A survey cannot address questions without the parent's consent, but now you can have an in-person closed-door meeting about it without the parent's knowledge or consent. You're saying that the school is more qualified than the parent. Why engage the parent on any issues at all then? Your policies are not consistent and they contradict one another. There are lawsuits being filed right now in other school districts pertaining to these issues that I've raised multiple times. I've asked you to remedy this by complying with the law. The simple remedy is to just include the parental consent, but you have not given a satisfactory answer on any of these real issues that have been raised. You continue to expose our school to potential lawsuits. This can be completely avoided by adding parental consent. You contact parents for other infractions and concerns, you've already set the precedent for this, but for some reason, when it comes to transgender, you are not consistent in seeking parent consent. Why? And again, what laws dictate these actions? Thank you.
Mrs. Santangelo, could you please tell me what exactly, what questions have not been followed up specifically so that we can get answers to questions that you believe haven't been responded to?
So those would be the issues that I raised in the last conference hearing you weren't here, but.
Okay, would you be so kind as to send me an email with those questions? Thank you. And I fail to remind the public that an alarm will go off at four minutes indicating that you have one minute left to speak. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Tiffany Jarrett. I'm in Flemington. I have a couple things, just a request. I wasn't able to make the last meeting and I noticed when I went to look at the public comments, they don't write them out anymore according to who's speaking, so we can't view the public comments. This used to be done in the past, so I just wanted to request if that could be done again.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, we can look into that. I don't believe there's ever been specifics.
There was.
Put into the minutes, but we can, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you. Another thing I wanted to ask about and follow up on was the results of the mental health survey. And I was just wondering, as the school climate surveys are available for really everyone to see, but if we will be notified of results of how our students and kids are feeling in that regards.
Dr. Moore, do you want to respond or we'll get back?
Yeah, I'll respond after.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, and then I was just wondering, unless I missed it in the email, I didn't get the parent assessment for that on the parent end. I know that that was.
You're talking about the survey, the parent survey?
The, not the school climate, yeah, the mental health survey.
From the parent perspective?
Yes, yes. Maybe I missed it, just wanted to ask about that. Also, so in reviewing the agenda for the meeting, I came across the policy for student surveys, analysis and evaluations, 2415.05. There were some things that kind of really jumped out at me here. In terms of notifying the parents of certain things, if policies have been revised, I don't know if that's, that is something that's in the policy, that if this policy is revised, it's supposed to be sent to all the parents and students. I don't know, has that been done so that parents in the community are notified of their rights, their students' rights at all?
So we'll respond at the end once you're, through your questions, thank you.
And then just regarding this policy and in reviewing the rights for the students, some things here regarding to the questions asked in the survey, I'm very familiar with the. I'm very familiar with the school climate surveys that were done in the past. So on those surveys, I've noticed several changes and new questions that were added. And in terms of the policy here stating psychiatric or psychological examination or test means a method of obtaining information, including a group activity, that is not directly related to academic instruction, and that is designed to elicit information about attitudes, habits, traits, opinions, beliefs, or feelings. And I believe this is part of a law. Those specific things are to protect our children. And number one is regarding consent. So with that, there's a whole list of different things that consent is required specifically. And here I see number three. It says sex behavior or attitudes. So when I was reviewing the new school climate survey, question 39, how often do teachers encourage you to think about the experiences of someone of a different race, ethnicity, culture? Fine. Or sexual orientation? Why does the school want to know the sexual preferences and attitudes of these children? It's enough that they're asked in the beginning their gender identity. I get that. But this is overstepping bounds regarding sexuality. Why do our children's sexuality matter? It's also asked if they are a member of the LGBTQ community. So on that note, this is, this is really, I'm guessing, I'm not a lawyer, but this is definitely violating the privacy of children, especially when they're being asked. Now, on the climate survey, they were told in the email that this was not.
Ms. Jarrett, you have about 30 seconds left.
Okay, this was not a mandatory survey. However, the mental health survey, they were not notified of that. So there, I have more things to say on this, and unfortunately, I can't fit it into this time. But this, I have very strong concerns regarding, this is really inappropriate for the school to be asking this of our children, and they don't know any better to say, "You don't have the right to ask me about my sexual preferences."
Thank you. I'm going to see if there's any other public comment, and then, when we close up public comment, I'll defer to Dr. Moore if he can answer any of these questions. I think I can dare to say that some of those questions are very specific as to particular questions in the survey, and that would probably be helpful to have an email with those specific questions. But I think some of the general questions we can respond to. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Okay, so with that, I'm going to close public comment. And Dr. Moore, is there anything you'd like to respond to or can to in a moment?
Yeah, no, I welcome any emails for any finer sort of answers, any more detailed answers on this stuff. I do feel like I did answer questions last time about why we have followed state guidance and from state law regarding our provisions for transgender children. For example, if a transgender child comes to me and says, "Here's what I would like to be called. Here are the pronouns I would like you to use. Please don't tell my parents." I am not going to tell that child's parents. You don't like that answer, I understand that, but I have answered that question. We do not tell parents when these children tell us not to, because they have reasons for telling us not to. And the guidance from the Department of Education indicates that we ought to respect that. My hope certainly is that any child who is considering, identifying, struggling through dysphoria, whatever it may be that they're going through with regard to their gender, that they are speaking to their parents. I would imagine that in the vast majority, well, I can't not just imagine, the vast majority of cases that we've had in the school, parents were aware and supportive. So it's, but it's not our place, given the guidance that we have, to go against the child's concerns and bring that to the parent's attention. So I've answered that question. I don't have any further justification for that, but I can continue the conversation and email if you'd like. Regarding some of the other concerns, so Mrs. Jarrett, I think you're bringing up a couple of different surveys. We had a climate survey, we had a counseling survey, we also had a teen mental health first aid survey that was given to certain students. And we can talk more about that if you have some specific concerns about any of those. I don't believe the teen mental health survey had a parent component. I'll check on that, but I don't believe there was a parent component for the teen mental health first aid survey. As far as the surveys being illegal for asking students their gender identity or their sexual identity, sex behavior or attitudes as an item that requires consent, we don't read that to cover sexual identity or gender identity. We read that to cover things like, how often do you have sexual relations with someone? How, you know, sexual behaviors and attitudes toward sexual activity. A student's gender identity does not fall under that, and I would argue as well that a student's sexual identity, as heterosexual, homosexual, or otherwise, wouldn't fall under their behavior or attitudes. I think we're talking about kids' identities. So I don't see that as violating any rule or reg here as far as consent's required. And you're right, there was a new law that required this change in the survey policy. This is only the first reading tonight that the boards voted on, so the policy hasn't changed yet. The policy would change on the second reading, and if there's a requirement there to notify parents of a change in policy, once it's adopted after the second reading is when we would do that. So it would be premature to do that now, only because the board hasn't completed its process for approving the policy. Now, a lot of questions came from the microphone tonight on some of these things, so again, you always know that you can reach out to me. Mrs. Jarrett, I've sat down with you on multiple occasions, certainly, to answer your questions. Reach out to me if I'm not answering your questions, and I'll certainly get back to you as soon as I can with more detailed answers. That's it, thanks.
Can we respond, Dr. Moore, to the question about public comment in the minutes?
Oh, yeah, I'm not aware, and maybe before my time. Public comment was never, was never summarized, well, I guess in the minutes, I'm not sure. I mean, the thing to remember about public comment, public comment is comments to the board. The audience for public comment is the Board of Education. You all are here to hear what the public has to share with you. So as long as you hear it, we're fulfilling our purpose in allowing that input to come to you. Public comment is not for grandstanding, certainly. You know, it's not for campaigning, it's for sharing thoughts with you. And the video is always available. Public comment is always preserved in the video. We never cut public comment from the video. But as far as summarizing it in the minutes, or summarizing it in any way, I'm not sure when we may have done that, or, yeah, so maybe with the switch to board docs. But at that same point, that's when we started offering the videos, yeah, so the videos are there as part of the record. And so rather than, I think, try to summarize tone and message in minutes, it's probably much more effective to leave the public comment as it stands in the video for anybody to experience live. But again, the purpose of public comment is for you all to hear the comment. And so if you're feeling that you're not hearing the comments or getting what you need, then do let me know.
And with regard to the parent survey, I know the parent survey did go out for counseling and the climate survey, so for some reason, you didn't get them. Maybe they went to a spam folder, or, but they did go out to all parents, and I received both as a parent.
Yeah, the first two. The teen mental health didn't have a parent component.
Yeah, that last one did.
That just had a student component.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a time you ask for a public forum? If there's something you'd like to get out there?
Well, I closed the public forum, so I would just suggest that you send an email to me and/or Dr. Moore if you have any additional questions, and we'll follow up. Okay.
Lisa, could I just add something?
Of course, yeah.
And speaking for myself, not speaking for any of you here, I think that the first speaker, you know, the concerns that we heard, I respect those. I just, it may not have been intentional, but I think as a parent equating, the word I heard was infraction, and then specifically vaping, or fighting, or drug use on school property, as a parent, I don't equate those things or an infraction with a student or a child confiding with their guidance counselor or discussing these things. So I wanted to put that out there, because I think words matter. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you. And I think also on the agenda, the board comments should be, they're moved on this agenda too, so we'll have to go back and look.
Yeah.
Because usually, they're after the second residence forum, so that we can have these discussions after public comments, just so for next month, we could make sure we move that back and get red committee back on the agenda. Yeah. Okay, any other board comments? Yeah.
One more question. Are we going to get the results of those surveys?
Yeah, so one of the board goals and several of our administrative goals are around those surveys. So in Student Life and Program this coming month, we're going to be talking about some of the counseling things, as the counseling folks have been working on the policy as well. So that's going to be happening in Student Life and Program, and also, you know, Mr. Brandt is working on all of the results with his team for the climate survey that we did. So those are coming to you soon as well.
Any other board comments, questions? Okay, at this time, we're going to convene into executive session to discuss HIBs, legal matters, and security for about hour and a half?
That might be a little long.
Hour?
Say.
We'll say an hour, okay. All in favor?
No action.
No action after.